To conclude these, uh, these submittals and the review process, John Forrest has a meeting set up with, uh, with Mr. Doyle in the very near future in order to assist in helping site the specific building on, uh, on the lots. So I do believe all the other details have been taken care of.
Do you think they would be ready for next week's council?
No, sir.
No? Okay, then, um, I'd like to table this item to the next committee meeting so that staff can get an opportunity to meet with the developer to, uh, get approval for a site plan. Any questions? Alden McCollis.
Uh, he probably wants to go in there and start cleaning up the lot to get it ready.
Yeah.
I think we should give him a little break on it because the lot has all kind of debris all over it from when they took the, they brought the house down. And I think it might be nice to, we will accept, we will pass the, because he's, he's in requirements, so we will, we'll pass it. So I would suggest that we let the man clean the lot up at least.
Ms. Noah.
Based upon Alden McCollis's comments, I do believe that we can get together with Mr. Doyle before next week in order to get whatever, whatever is required taken care of with respect to whatever particular parcel that he wants to construct on first.
Okay. Owen Suback?
Yeah, we approve the exact same two-lot subdivision right next door. Uh, I think that stuff you could tie to the building permits. I think we could, uh, by motion approve the two-lot subdivision tonight, and then any other issues that staff with the tree cutting ordinance or anything else they need to address can be tied into the building permits. That a building permit won't be issued until those last housekeeping matters would be taken care of rather than tabling this to the future because there is some debris on one of lots and it would be nice to get it cleaned up.
Okay, then I'll withdraw the motion to table and make a motion then to approve the, um, two-lot sub, two-lot subdivision for the construction use of the two single-family homes at 250 South Central. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Question.
Owen Chocky.
Yeah, Alden McCollis, can you tell me what, your wife was out there walking the dog when she saw the tree being taken down?
Yes.
What time was that?
Seven o'clock in the morning.
Do we have some kind of ordinance as to when you can be making noise like that outside?
Seven o'clock in the morning.
Seven o'clock.
Is it seven o'clock?
Yeah.
Trust me, I, I know that one.
Thank you.
Okay, then, on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
We'd show one opposed. Alden Chocky. Okay, the next item then is, next item is report and recommendation case number 06SU9, Genuine Parts Company doing business is Napa Auto, 372 Irving Park, looking for a special use permit and lot consolidation to put up an auto parts warehouse and that. And you're going to speak to this, sir?
Okay.
Could you identify yourself, please?
Yes, my name's David, oh, this is working. My name's David Shaw, I'm attorney for the owner of the property, Terraco.
Okay.
First of all, let me thank the committee for giving us the opportunity to basically represent in a brief manner of this proposal. Uh, we, I've come in rather late in the game. Napa, in fact, has been working with staff for well over a year on this project, and it's our understanding that there are still some major concerns. We did have Napa's representative, uh, lined up to be present tonight except he was stuck on the tarmac at Hartsfield Airport in Atlanta, so I apologize for that. Uh, we do have Dan Wander from Terraco with us who is just passing out some comparative charts that we had prepared relative to this project. But, uh, basically, I'd, I'd like to briefly summarize the points that I think really dictate the support for this project. First of all, as I'm sure most of you know, this is property that is basically set, sat vacant for a considerable period of time. It is zoned for commercial use, it is zoned in the B2 district, which enables it to be developed with uses under the B1 and B2, uh, which is significant because there are probably 60 or 70 permitted uses within those districts that if you look at your own zoning code represent uses that are either significantly more intense in terms of traffic, in terms of noise, in terms of operating hours, and, uh, many of which would not generate any income whatsoever, any sales tax revenues for the municipality. Uh, just naming some, there's travel agency, banks with a drive-through, beauty shop, dry cleaning, offices, professional offices, a video store, ice cream parlors, and so on and so forth, and there are many. Uh, I think what we're presenting here is a very appropriate use with a major national retailer, a significant financial strength, uh, who has worked very hard to come up with a product that would complement the village, would be aesthetically pleasing to the area, and bottom line would generate approximately $2.3 million in annual sales revenues. That would mean $46,000 a year to the, to the city, um, from a very small site. I put that in perspective, it would basically pay for your new financial software over a period of 48 months, but, uh, nevertheless, it is a significant amount of revenue. Um, the, uh, thank you. The other thing that I, I think really has to be considered is the process that we've gone through in terms of the special use. Under your ordinance, as is the case in, in most city ordinances and village ordinances, the owner could sell to a buyer who could pick any one of the permitted uses in the B1 or B2 district, and all that owner would have to do is prepare plans in compliance with the bulk regulations and building codes, go to the city and say, "Give me my building permit," and the plan commission, this committee and the city council would never have the opportunity to review that particular product and that particular development. Uh, that's the way it is almost universally, and that's the way it is in, in the city of Wooddale. What Napa has opted to do is apply for a special use. That gives this community an extraordinary amount, amount of power and discretion in terms of reviewing and approving this particular development. That goes to traffic, it goes to internal traffic patterns, it goes to the aesthetics of the building, and as to those points, number one-
Not to interrupt you, but I will. What I passed out to the, uh, committee was our code, and it's on, uh, it's section 10.1104, it's the standards, and it's one, and it's continued on the back page, one through seven are the standards, which we should be reviewing and going over when we make a decision tonight as to whether or not we should approve or disapprove of special use. I'm sorry, sir.
That's perfectly okay. Um, as, as to the traffic, I know one of the major concerns was the, uh, the full access on Irving Park Road, which I'm sure most of you realize is a real plum for a retail developer. Uh, because the, the city was concerned about that, Napa has agreed to limit that to a ride-in and ride-out. And I'll tell you, as a general rule, most developers would probably haul us into a psychiatrist for giving up that type of access, but Napa is certainly willing to do that in order to facilitate the approval process. Uh, with respect to the building itself, I think that, uh, you've seen the elevations, I don't know if you recall what the original proposal was, but staff has really hammered Napa very, very hard, and they have come up with an all masonry, all brick, very, very attractive building with additional glass, with minimal signage in terms of identification, extremely functional, even if it was ultimately converted to some other use, and just an attractive addition to the neighborhood. Uh, this is a building that will cost somewhere in the area of $1.2 million to construct. It is not an insignificant structure. Uh, again, this is the type of thing that Napa has been willing to do and that their special use request has enabled the village to control to a large degree. Um, with regard to the building, I know there's been some question as to the amount of retail space versus the amount of, I guess what's identified as storage space, but I would urge you to consider that this is not like a Walgreens or a Toys R Us. People don't go through aisles and throw mufflers and tailpipes into a cart. This is really a service-oriented retail business. You walk into, uh, the sales area, there are people to service you at a counter, and they bring what you're seeking from the inventory which is stored in the back. So everything in the, in the back is, uh, inventory to be sold on-site. It's not a distribution center, it's not a warehouse center. I think that's basically, uh, our presentation. Those are the points that we wanted to get across in a concise manner, and we think that, uh, this really is an appropriate and a valuable addition to the city of Wooddale. Uh, if there are any questions, to the extent we can answer them, we'd be happy to do so.
Alden Tomlin.
I just have a question. What's different about your proposal this time than the last time that you came to us?
Uh, I really wasn't privy to our last proposal. I don't know what, I mean, the last presentation, I don't know what points were mentioned.
Okay, was there anybody with you that was here at the last one?
Uh, Dan Wander, I believe, was here.
Because, I, I, I mean, the reason I'm asking, okay, is because I don't see any difference.
Uh, I'm not-
I mean, tonight, we were just, and tonight, we were, you know, we just got this tonight, okay, and we know, and I know for a fact staff has requested more information from you folks prior to this meeting tonight.
Well, we've, we have given staff, I believe-
We got a, we, yeah, last week they came to a meeting, somebody came to a meeting and gave us a letter at that meeting, okay, um, you know, and I guess I'm just curious as to really what's, what's changed and-
Well, I'm not sure anything has changed. Let me, let me put this in perspective. Um, I wrote that letter to the village, to the city, rather, and to staff, uh, simply to request a reconsideration of the matter. Uh, and I put some of the arguments down or some of the points down that we thought would be irrelevant. I am not sure whether all of these points in the sequential, I know that Napa was basically concentrating on their facility. Uh, we have not changed the final facility as it was ultimately agreed upon, so there really was nothing physically to, uh, to submit. I, I don't think that staff, I don't know if Ross is still here, but, I don't, oh, there is. I don't believe that staff has requested any additional information to us, from us. We just really wanted the opportunity to do a brief and concise summary of the most salient points because I was not sure that these weren't lost during the course of the presentation, which concentrated primarily on the physical aspects of the plan.
There was, there was more involved, okay, than just the physical aspects of it because I think a lot of the physical aspects were addressed, you know, prior to that, to that decision, uh, to the decision being made. Some of the issues that came up, one specifically related to the vehicle that's going to be bringing the supplies in and the turning radius within the development, and as to whether or not, you know, they couldn't go back and cut a deal with either the bank directly to the east of them or to the property to the west. What we were told flat out is, no, they don't want to do it, you know, that's it.
Uh, no.
Neither one wanted to do it, neither the bank wanted to allow you to, to, to go back in there, okay, through their parking lot or use their property.
That, that's correct. We were, we, we approached our neighbors several times, uh, for additional access and for perhaps additional access to the site in general, and it's my understanding that we were rebuffed fairly summarily, but Dan can, perhaps Dan can adjust that.
Um-
Dan Wander from Terraco, I'm sorry.
Yes, um, I think that in speaking, in speaking to that point as it relates to this, there were some concerns at the last meeting regarding whether or not the, uh, the trucks that were going to be servicing the site were going to be able to make adequate turning ratios to be able to, to be able to, uh, make this site function properly. And, um, we did the, the proper truck turnaround exhibits to be able to show that the trucks that were going to be able to be servicing the site would adequately be able to move in and out of this site even with, um, the restricted access that we talked about before. Um, we also, about a month ago, um, came in and before we made our formal request to, um, to, for reconsideration here, when we met with Ross and we went through the different development-related issues, I think that we had a comfort level that, as it relates to all the different things that were, in terms of access and in terms of traffic circulation on-site and so forth, would work. I have an exhibit here that I can, that I can show you as it relates to the, uh, the truck. The majority of the trucks that are coming here, um, are small panel trucks that are going to be Napa trucks, and, you know, for them to have access in and out of here isn't really that significant. Um, for, they're going to have one larger truck a day, um, to, at off-peak hours to be able to make some deliveries, but again, that's the kind of, uh, a kind of a truck that would be able to make it in and out of this site. And, you know, and, and as it relates to your comment in terms of sort of, you know, what's really changed here, I think that it was really our goal and, and really trying to really take a look at this in terms of the, in terms of the big pictures, as, as David said, um, you know, we have a national retailer that's going to make a substantial investment in this community, and it's going to be, um, very, very nice use, and there's going to be substantial economic benefit for the community, and we've worked very, very hard, and we want to make sure that we've been able to highlight as much as possible here, um, you know, what the, what the choice is here that the village is going to be making, and we really feel that the choice should be to be able to choose to approve this because I think that, um, as the alternatives go, this is, this is, this is, I think, as strong, if not one of the strongest alternatives, to be able to provide economic development in a strong retailer with a very attractive, um, building that has been strongly vetted by staff and by your different committees here to be able to, be able to get approval.
Okay, if I, if I could, Ed, I'd like to follow up. I'd like to ask the, uh, because I do have another kind of a concern, okay, and really, probably right now, this is probably my biggest concern, okay, is the, the way you're going to get in and out of that site, okay? And I'd like to ask the, Frank Benowitz, if he wouldn't mind stepping up to the podium because I have a question to ask him. Frank's our chief of police. Frank, do you, tell me, tell me I'm crazy, okay, because this is what, this is what I'm envisioning happening.
Just never go out there.
This, this is what I'm envisioning happening. I'm going, I'm coming from the east, I'm coming from Wooddale Road, and I want to go to Napa. Since I can't get in because of this, the way this is, I'm going to have to go down, probably to Georgetown or the first side street I can find, to be able to, to have to turn around and come back to get in to this site from the left. And the same would hold true, okay, if I wanted to exit back out from the site once I got into the site, I would have to go down probably to Maher, okay, to turn around, kind of like similar situation we have with the Burger King. Am I crazy in, in thinking that that's exactly what's going to happen with this type of, that close, that close to Addison Road?
With the lane, with the, uh, the diagram that I'm looking at, and that's been previously discussed with the curb cut and the pork chop that's there, that is correct. Keep in mind, uh, we also have traffic that's leaving the Target that's across from Dalewood, and once again, that becomes a little bit more of a difficult, uh, intersection over there, and as submitted with the pork chop, your assumptions, I would think, would be correct.
Would you say that it's better with, I mean, and again, I'm asking your experience, okay? I mean, would you say it's better with it or without it? I mean, I, I understand that there's a three, there, actually, at that point, if you're going eastbound, there is that turn lane, okay, for, to go into the Jewel Target area over there. Um, you know, that the traffic could so that if they were coming eastbound, they wouldn't necessarily get hung up, they could pull over into that to turn in. Chances of having two or three cars in a row going into there at one time are probably slim, you know, but would you say that'd be better if it was open as opposed to the pork chop? I mean, I know that area is tough because of all the curb cuts, as it is.
Without the pork chop that would be there, I don't have the immediate accident data off the top of my head, but because of the facts that, the fact that you're between Dalewood and the Target and Addison Road, it would be quite a lot of activity that's going on that may confuse somebody or mistime things.
So-
The pork chop would probably be the most desirable option.
Okay, okay, that's hung on here, okay. Thank you.
Alden Suback?
I think that if you, um, look through the factors that were, you know, passed out and that we're supposed to review as part of the statute, I, I think the biggest issue is the, the traffic, and, you know, the difference between approving this versus something we wouldn't have control over, uh, if they go anything else under the B2, a fast food restaurant, uh, we wouldn't have control over, and we wouldn't be able to put the restrictions on them such as the curb cuts. One of the things that the diagram with the building shows us, one thing wrong with their code, that's not their fault, is that we allow a building to go within five feet or right off the lot line, um, and they're able to do that, but that, you can see how it kind of is going to be very close to the building next to it. Uh, my biggest concern is not the traffic, because I don't know how much retail traffic will be at a store like this, uh, and I am excited about the amount of sales tax that can be generated from a 175-foot space right now that's vacant. It's just that one truck a day, that's the semi-truck, and I keep hearing that you can run a module that says it's going to work in there. Until I see that and see it either on a video or see it withdrawn or, you know, that it can be made, I can't see how it can be done. Uh, and if I got past that hurdle and I supported the project before, I would support this. And what I would want is the developer to go back and say, "Show me not just an affidavit or something, show me a, a diagram or a video that could show a semi-truck turning into this thing, being able to park it, assuming all the cars are filled in there, and turn around and get out." And then I'd also want Napa's agreement as part of the special use that they're only going to have one delivery a day of a semi-truck.
Just semi-truck.
And that semi-truck's going to be during off-hours, so we're going to avoid the morning and avoid the rush hour, and because it's a special use-
You could put that in there.
In a special use, well, we, we could approve it, uh, and then in three years, guess what? If their, if their semi-trucks coming, you know, six days or six times a day, we could cite them, have a hearing, and they could lose their special use, and Napa will be moving out of their nice building that they built there. So we do have some control on a special use, but I still have to be convinced that that semi-truck can get in and out.
Okay. Alden Wesley.
I agree with, uh, Marshall on that. We need to make sure that's going to happen. The drawback I had on this whole project is the semis coming in there, and that's a bad intersection now, it backs up. Dave, taking out the, and like Chief said, taking out that pork chop, I think we will have those cars backed up in the middle of Addison Road if that's the case. Concern I have with this is the time of the truck being delivered, okay, and if you don't make that turn, that semi's backing right up on Irving Park Road, and you can't tell me it ain't going to happen, because it will. So I will not support this until those are, issues have been addressed, and the other issue is, like our last committee meeting, there has not been a change on this plan, and I believe we made the, the commitment, if there wasn't anything coming back, that we were going to vote the way we want tonight on it. It's going or it's not going, because there was no new evidence presented to me, far I'm concerned. I mean, you own the property, that's fine, but now I got someone, now we're going to play games again with, now we got contact Napa again? Well, I'm sorry, if Napa couldn't come here and you knew that Napa was coming, I understand he was tied up, okay, but when, what really got me ticked off is when someone comes in at 7:30 last, last meeting and, and hands us a, a letter saying they wanted to come back to committee. That ain't fair, it was supposed to be done on that time.
Well-
And, and the, and the decision was made, and, and the discussion that was made here by Mr. Tomlin here, that if there ain't no change on this plan or they address these issue, the vote is going regardless. So far, I'm concerned, the final vote should be done here and that's it, because there was no change and, and it wasn't fair that we did not even get a copy of that letter as, as elected officials because we come in at 7:30 at, at night and hand our attorney a continues.
Can I adjust that for a minute? Uh, I, when I wrote that letter, I made no request as to any time or any date. Uh, I, I addressed it, I believe, to the city manager. Uh, we were just told to come to the meeting. Uh, I had absolutely no expectation that anything would or would not be done. Uh, we just basically did what we were told. I mean, as far as we were concerned, the city could take as much time as they want or wanted to consider or not, or not reconsider it. We didn't mean to offend anybody by showing up here. We were told when we walked in that this probably should be tabled because it should go back to the committee. With regard to any additional information other than the concerns we heard tonight relative to the truck and some more definitive information as to whether or not this movement can be made safely, I, I don't know of any other change or any additional information that were, was requested of us. So I, I really don't know how to respond to that.
Alden Tomlin?
Yeah, just as a follow-up, okay, I know you weren't here at the last meeting, but that issue with the truck and the radius and the, and the turning, that was, that was the big issue, and that's pretty much what shot it down the last time.
And we, you know, and, and I, I apologize for this, if, if, if we weren't hearing things properly, but we, after, and I, I was here and I heard those concerns, and we did have, um, before we wrote the letter, we did have a, we did have a meeting, and we did go through the different truck turnaround, um, you know, modules to be able to show this, and, and if we heard it, we heard it wrong, and it's, it's our error, but, but we really felt that, that we were not hearing that that was, that that was continually a concern once we could show that the truck module would work. And I would say, as it relates to this overall development, just as it relates to the traffic issues, and I agree, the traffic issues clearly are paramount concern as it relates to this kind of a development, but that, um, that, that in approving this and trying to work through any issues or any concerns that you have as it relates to making sure that this works, you are going to, this development would put you in a much better position relatively speaking to other alternatives in terms of, in terms of other uses, um, that are out there that would have full access, that would have cars, significant cars queuing to get into the site or queuing to get out of the site. We are looking at a very, you know, relatively speaking, for a retail center, really low-impact use.
If I, if I could interject, I mean, because I know where you're going, but let me just, let me just say this, okay? TCF Bank came in, and it's a great example of, of what you had said a little bit earlier. TCF came in, TCF Bank came in, they didn't need anything at all because they did meet all of our codes, so they never came to this council. We had nothing whatsoever to say about whether we even wanted them here in this community, okay? And, I mean, that's, that's, so I, I, believe me, I understand the issue of, here's an opportunity for us as a council, okay, to, to actually limit, okay, or deal with that, that ish, those issues, okay, more so than if somebody does want to come in and put something, put in another bank, let's say, because you're right. I mean, they're going to come in and they're going to do, because as long as they don't have, they don't need to require any variances or any special uses, if they meet the code, you know, and I've always told people this, if you meet the code, you know what? You don't even have to come here, you can do what you want with your property, okay? But in this instance, I think if you, to satisfy the issue up here, I think, because, you know, the more I've thought about it, and I, and I'll be honest with you, I've been opposed to this thing, and I don't know why other than, you know, I, I really didn't want, and I'll be honest with you, I didn't want another car parts dealer, and that's exactly how I look at it, automobile dealer or car parts, you know, on Irving Park Road. But when you look at what it can bring in in terms of, you know, the revenue it can generate for the city, I mean, uh, in comparison to a bank, which by the way brings in absolutely nothing, okay, to, to a municipality, um, it's, it is substantial. It is definitely substantial, and I think if you can address the issue of showing us either visually, okay, somehow, um, you know, the turning radius being able, and do it in different scenarios, with cars parked in those spots, with cars, you know, not in those spots, I mean, that a truck will be able to back in or pull in and then back around, because that's, if I recall, that's how it was explained, is that, and, and I don't know if everybody can see this, but they basically, they pull in to this area here and then back down, back down because this is where they're going to be-
Actually, the movement's the other way, but rather than try to explain it now- Actually, the movement's the other way, but, rather than try to explain it now, the concern is quite clear, and if you give us the opportunity, we would be happy to come back with something grabbed.
I wouldn't be opposed to, to table, I mean, I really wouldn't. I wouldn't be opposed to tabling this, you know, to, to the next committee meeting. I mean, I know it's a long-term, drawn-out for you folks, but I think if it's going to satisfy...
But it's a valid issue, I mean, it should be addressed.
Right, if it's going to satisfy, you know, the, the majority of the, this committee, I wouldn't be opposed to tabling it till the next committee meeting in February. I know what I said.
Alvin. Alvin Coles?
I think we should let them have some kind of a sense that we want the place in, and tell them that we actually want it, but we can't give them the special permit yet until we see what's going on with the truck. And if they can give us the size of the truck that they're going to put in, because trailers have 20-foot trailers, 30-foot trailers, 40-foot trailers, 50, and 60, because the 60 won't go in there, and then they have double bottoms, so you can't, you can't put in a double bottom in that little spot. But if you can, it might be a state truck, just a regular state body truck, and that, that needs no turning around, no trouble at all. So, I mean, what we should do is give them that we want it, but you've got to come up with some kind of idea what's...
I understand.
And what time the truck is going to be there approximately. Thank you.
Alvin Suback?
And again, I think they should commit to a time in that, that we, part of the approval. With Alvin Wesley, continuances, you know, we were going to be here that night either way, so it wasn't like they dragged us to a meeting. It was their continuance, and I think as a petitioner and a, and a property owner, they have that right. If it was a special meeting, I would take a little different offense to it. When you redraw this a little bit, though, right now, the curb cut, or the curb in the rear goes into the utility easement, so that has to be addressed. I think you're going to have to draw this without that, otherwise you're going to be requesting a variance to go into utility easement. Also, I think that as far as landscaping, landscaping has to be increased on the building, especially including planting along the parkway. So, because this is, the building is an improvement, it's still a warehouse-type building, and so I'd want it to be screened as much as possible along Irving Park Road.
Mayor Johnson?
Do you have an estimate as to how much this building is going to produce in property taxes as well?
Well, it would be a third, if it's a 1.2 million dollars at market. Probably about $25,000, $30,000 a year is my guess. Which I assume most of that goes to the school and park and...
Alvin Wesley?
During drawback, I have tabling this. When they came to the committee with the proposal right off the bat, they knew our concerns right off the bat. How many times are we going to continue to table this item on the, I, I understand there's no ruling how many times we can table it, but to me, they knew the plan, our plan with the pork chop before. They have not addressed that issue. I mean, I understand that this is a different circumstances, but I don't think we should table it tonight, because simple reason is, or, if we're going to table it tonight, they got one week to bring it back to council, because it ain't fair that we're going to keep tabling this, tabling it, and they knew about this issue months ago.
You accomplished.
I, I want accurate information. I don't want to tie their hands. If, if it takes them a month to get a good photograph, or if they go out there and they stripe it on, to show how it can be done, I'd rather have accurate information than quick information. One other thing I'd like to know, besides the turning radius, though, is your distance between your building and the building to the west. I think that should be a measurement that we should be provided with also, because one of the factors is whether or not the special use is going to be, in fear on the quiet enjoyment of everybody in the surrounding area, and even though our code allows you to go right in the lot line, I want to know that distance between that building, because that might require additional screening between that building and the one next door.
Anything further? If not, then I'd like to make the motion to table this to our February committee meeting, to give the developers the opportunity to positively demonstrate that the delivery vehicle and the size be determined by Napa, as that they can, in fact, successfully and safely use this property to make their deliveries.
Second.
Let's do a roll call on that, please.
Alvin Suback?
Yes.
Alvin Coles?
Yes.
Alvin Winger?
Yes.
Alvin Knype?
Yes.
Alvin Wesley?
No.
Alvin Shaki?
No.
Alvin Tolemy?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
You have till February, then. Okay, the next item will be the report and recommendation on utilizing a National Vacant and Abandoned Properties Grant. Clicker, would you like to fill us on this, please?
We saw an opportunity to apply for a grant, which was entitled the National Vacant and Abandoned Properties Grant, through ESRI, which is the software company that we do our GIS system through. The purpose or, or for this grant would be is to take your GIS into the, out into the field mobily, through a handheld device, so that your inspectors would have this information out with them in the field. And at first, when you think, well, why would we apply for a National Vacant Properties and Abandoned Properties Grant, you know, we don't really have a lot of that problem, but there are instances where, just like last week, our property maintenance inspector came across a situation where there was a new house that had been completed, and for whatever reason it is, in the process of foreclosure, the basement had flooded. He's out in the, the inspector is now out in the field trying to ascertain information about this property. If he had a mobile device out in the field, it would have made it much easier, because he could have tied in through the GIS system to the county information to find property owner information. Unfortunately, we didn't receive this grant, and when we find the recipients of this grant, they're very worthwhile agencies that, that need this assistance much more than, than Wooddale would. They were places such as New Orleans and, and many of the communities along the Gulf Coast that are dealing with much greater vacant and abandoned property problems than we will ever see here in Wooddale. However, the review committee did find that our, our application had merit, and essentially gave us a second prize, if you will. We got a $1,500 grant for, to use for ESRI products.
Grant or credit?
What's that, I'm sorry?
Grant or credit?
Grant. Or credit towards our software. And this, the purpose of the $1,500 grant or credit was to enhance our community's GIS system. And one thing that Gary Home and I had been debating and, and looking at was to get our GIS system off of mine and Gary's desk, and into the desks of everyone in the community. To do that through licensing, and that is a very expensive endeavor, so there is a program that ESRI has that's called an Arc Publisher. It allows us to take our maps and publish it to our network.